Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight we have our open study session. First on the agenda is our 2019-2020 proposed Tifa budget overview.
Good evening. I'm Tom Roscoe, the Tifa Administrator. As you received in your packets, the proposed budget that the Tifa Board adopted at its last regular meeting on May 8th. Kind of just briefly touch on things. We got some breathing room this year, finally. You know, after the economic downturn, we lost something like 45% of our budget. We dropped from over $3 million a year down to about 1.7 a year. And we've been making gains bit by bit. It's slow but sure. And this year, we did get additional TIF revenue that came in. And what helped us too was thanks to the renegotiating of the bonds a few years ago, our bond obligations dropped also by almost $300,000. So that helped give us some breathing room this year. Otherwise, things are pretty much the same, same as we've been going year to year. If you look at that listing, everything's pretty much around the same. Some variances for different line items in our budgets. Because of the increase, we had some extra money to put in, fund some extra things this year with the schools. We included $20,000 for the schools. They have some, a lot of concrete work they need to do, which is, can be quite pricey. Something else, we've had additional interest in our commercial rehab program, so we decided to add a little extra funds in there. Several businesses inquire. I don't know if they'll be back, but we give them the information, and if they're willing to fill out the paperwork and be paid up on their taxes and water bills and everything, we can help them out with some grants. Fire station improvements, there's some projects there that they need help with, so we've added some extra money there. Right-of-way maintenance repair, you'll notice that's a little extra. We own a number of properties in the Tifa district, and we're looking at them and looking at some maintenance that needs to be done on them, cleaning up some of the smaller trees and brush and getting rid of some of that. We'd like to look at, taking care of that, so we put some extra money in there. Van Born commercial improvements, we've put extra money in there. We're not sure what we may need this year exactly, but we have some extra money put aside for that should the need arise for the Van Born improvements. DPW, we figured we have, with the new DPW director, we figured once he gets his feet wet, I'll meet with him and see what ideas he has of what needs at the DPW yard. So we put some extra funding in there for that. Beach Daily improvements, the school superintendent had proposed some ideas for trying to promote the schools and beautify the area a bit, so we might be working with them on a project with some banners on Beach Daily that promote the city and the school district. And the library improvements, talking with the librarian at the JFK Library, they're looking into some safety improvements there, possibility of adding an emergency exit door. So we added some money in the line budget, in the budget line, to help them with that. So, that being said, does anybody have any questions?
Counselwoman Hicks Clayton was first, then. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So first, again, I'm very appreciative of Tifa and the board and what you do, the work. And again, this is not additional taxation, but a capture of an existing county tax, correct?
Right, well, it's county and state.
County and state, yes. And I think that's really important. And I know over the years, there have been some challenges in Lansing. We've seemed to have moved past that, knock on wood. Hopefully, we continue a positive migration there. My question is, a couple comments. The question is, you've mentioned being able to infuse additional funding, which is good. I like seeing that. But is there any proposed projects in particular, because Daily Park, you did the lighting project and the sign. What else are you looking for? Because I see, you know, good, you know, $10,000 there. And then, the other thing was along Van Born corridor, this part in the Tifa district, which would be the southwest corner, you know, economic development, redevelopment of that business corridor, as well as Beach Daily, which is also zoned for that. Anything, and I want to see if there's anything on the horizon that you can share with us. And the last thing I wanted to say is, the youth leadership program, which is a 501(c)(3), where we engage our youth in service, and that's how they develop leadership skills, as well as soft skills, I would hope you would consider using them, not using them, but encouraging them to participate in your cleanup and beautification projects. Because I think that would be a beautiful community partnership.
Yeah, if you have any information, I'd be happy to.
Absolutely. So are you, are there any projected projects that you foresee for Van Born corridor or Beach Daily, or even Daily Park?
Well, the Daily Park, it's stuff to get together with the new Parks and Rec Director. I met with him briefly, I saw him in passing, actually, when they had the flooding center set up at the Justice Center. I saw him in passing, and we talked a little. So I told him to keep in mind, you know, as he looks at Daily Park, see if there's anything he can see as an improvement there that they may need. So I figure once he gets his feet wet and starts to kind of know the lay of the land there. Last year, there was an idea to reduce the courts there. That's why we had a big amount of money in there, but that didn't happen, so.
Is that, that's a pickleball. Is that still something they're considering, or no?
Haven't heard.
Okay, well, with the new director, maybe, once he gets his legs under him.
Yeah, yeah, and Van Born, Van Born project, we're just going to be ready for when, you know, we get to that point where there's any projects being done. You know, some of the things you're talking about, possible, you know, changing of the lights and things like that, which we can, we can definitely assist with in our section.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselwoman.
The expense, the Justice Center bond, now, that's only a portion, you guys only pay a portion of the bond, correct?
We pay the whole thing on the Justice Center. We pay the bond and the interest. We pay a portion of the library. We pay 42.4% of the JFK.
Didn't we take something out of general fund not too long ago for the Justice Center bond?
So, you get the, so there's ten, there's money that comes from the courts, it's $10 a ticket. So whatever's in that fund each year, then we, we give that to Tifa, and you show a revenue book.
Yeah, if you look on the revenues, it says a city portion of Justice Center bond. We pay the whole thing, but then the city, the court fees are kind of reimbursed to us for that.
Okay, that's. So the revenue goes in, and then the total bond payment comes to.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Counselman Abdullah.
So I had two questions for you. Can you give me a little bit more information on the tree trimming? I know, obviously, it's only in the Tifa district, but is that for purchasing equipment, or is that for labor, or what exactly is it for?
That's, from my, from what I understand, is the city keeps a five-year cycle on tree trimming in the Tifa district, at least. That's what I'm familiar with. They go through, and so, I think they charge us something like, the city contractor charged, I think, $100 a tree. So we get a lot of work done off of that, and they go through, and I think we're right on schedule, keeping in schedule with that. So we go as far as the $25,000 will take us in a season in the fall. They go through and they trim the trees, and then the next fall, we have the next $25,000 to trim the trees.
Okay, so you're paying for a service. It's not equipment purchase.
Right, right, no, it's the city contractor.
Right. And then the second question, I want to get a little bit more information from you in regards to the Van Born commercial improvements. Can you give me a little, because I know you've doubled it up on that one.
Well, it's just, like I said, it's just getting ready for when the next step comes. Right now, I understand the, you know, the weight trim had given its proposals and whatnot. They'd come up with some ideas, and the first had to do more with ordinance and zoning issues. And then, once that's done, then the next phase will be starting to look at the improvements, the physical improvements. So we're not sure when that'll come, so we just want to be prepared.
But that's what I'm trying to clarify, because I know the City of Taylor and the City of DeWitt House, obviously, is on board, you know, for doing this. So when you say $50,000, what, are you like paying off a part of the weight trim bill, or what exactly does that go? Because I know the project still has not started. It's still in the pre-planning stages.
Yeah, that would be, like, it's ready for in case, when we get to the point of needing to actual physical improvements, like, street light poles or traffic light poles, whatever may come, you know, to be the first phase of physical improvements. It's set for that. Or, you know, if, you know, if there are fees and stuff for design and stuff, we could also help with that, too.
And if it's not all used this year, because obviously, with different things going on and Taylor right now, you know, that project's kind of an unknown factor when it's going to get going. And so, if hypothetically, it didn't get going until next year, can that be rolled over until next year?
Oh, yeah, we're prepared to continue it in the years.
Hold it, and then, okay.
And if it's, say, if all of a sudden, you know, we're prepared to move, and there's an opportunity to move on it, and they need a little extra from us than the $50,000, we have money in reserves that we can, you know, do a budget amendment and put into it.
Beautiful, thank you.
Thank you, Counselwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Follow-up question. With the Van Born corridor project, that originally, if I recall, started in 2017, or the process of. And I'm not quite sure if the situation with the Mayor Taylor would impact this project going forward. I'm not quite sure why it would. But with that being said, there hasn't, and I haven't seen an update recently. Do you have something for us as an update?
No, I'm just waiting for the, till we get called in.
All right, thank you, because it seems to be moving along slowly.
Counselman Wenzel.
Well, I had two questions. One was answered by, asked by Counselman Abdullah about the money, if it's not used. And the second part of that question was, is there any monies that were granted in last year's budget that you didn't use this year?
Oh, you mean in this, the current, yeah, the current year's budget? Yeah, there's, we didn't spend all the monies from all the categories. You know, we had put aside, say, like, say, for library improvements, the $2,000, they didn't ask us for anything this year to cover, anything. So it just, you know, goes back into our fund balance, and then, like, next year, we have the $5,000 programmed for them.
Is there something that you can give us that shows how much you have left in these different categories, or what?
Well, at the end of the year, you know, everything goes into fund balance. So our fund balance currently is something about $2.6 million, I believe.
And that's used for what in particular?
Well, it's for, we have projects, my understanding is the, the philosophy has always been, with the fund balance, is try to have at least one to two years' worth of bond payments in savings, in case something happens. Because it helped save us when the economy dropped, we had a lot of projects, you know, that we tried to keep going, and, you know, when you lose that much of your budget, it really takes a hit. So we have that money primarily for reserves, but if something were to come up for, you know, like a large project, like, say, the Van Born project, we can, you know, the Board can consider allocating some of that money towards those kind of projects.
All right, thanks.
Madam Chair.
Counselman Costa.
The buying of parcels by Tifa and putting them together and marketing them, is that slowing down, or is that?
Well, we do own several properties. We did obtain one this year, actually was donated to us. A property owner didn't want to have to maintain it anymore, so she signed it over to us. So now we, Tifa owns it and maintains it. The market is slowly picking up down there, but it's not picking up anywhere what some people think is. We attempted to buy a parcel, a property down there. We offered, we did an appraisal on it, we paid for an appraisal, and the Tifa Board offered roughly what the appraisal was on it, and the gentleman owned it, thought it was worth four times that, five times that even. So we didn't come to an understanding there, but, you know, we're there, willing to offer some properties. And then, once, as the market's picking up, you know, it would be nice to see some of them go back on the market and be developed.
Yeah, the, there was the eye doctor that put up the, and the chef, the building where the old Metro truck stop was, it's a beautiful building, and they never had one tenant that...
Yeah, that was some, I guess, as you say, internal stuff among the ownership. We tried to help them and assist them, but.
I met with them, I think I was state rep at the time, you know, tried to help and get it marketed and stuff. It was a nice building, just the location. But yeah, I never had one tenant, and it's all boarded up now. It's a shame.
Any further questions? Thank you for your presentation.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, because I was going to try to limit myself to two.
Two.
But I, yeah, and I understand, so I can pass, but I will be asking you about the contingency.
Well, I can.
That's a big chunk.
I can just answer, we, when we did, redid the, when we were talking about the budget, we used to follow a different format in the past, where they would encumber funds year to year, and the auditor said, no, nobody really does that, with this, you know, it's best to do just a annual budget, and then things go into fund balance. So then, when it came to contingency, they asked, well, what do we do? And, you know, when you have a project, you figure 15% contingency, like, say, on a construction project. So we asked the auditors, was that kind of the logic you would follow? And they said, well, it's a logic. They said, it's whatever you kind of want to, the Board feels is best. So we went with 10%, just as a backup in case something happens, or, so not quite the 15 that people usually call a contingency, but we thought 10% was pretty accurate.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, next on the agenda for tonight. We have the corporate fund budget wrap-up for 2019-2020. We do have a couple of recommendations from our different council members. I don't know how we want to handle this.
You can go page by page.
Counselman Muscat is contingent on if we go to a five-day work week. Otherwise, he doesn't want any of his to be implemented. We can go back to what we did last year, okay. Are you studying with revenues, or? They do have a question on revenues, if we allow it, please. Okay, let's go with revenues, and that begins on page number one, please.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Counselwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question on page one is account number 101000402.010. Act 345 taxation increase of close to $2 million from previous years, which ran around $8 to $8.5 million. And my question is, for us to approve a tax increase of over $2 million or close to $2 million, I would like to know what the justification is and what records you're using reporting to determine that amount.
Hello, Counsel. Okay, the answer to the question of that is that with that PA 202, we have to come up with excess money to fund it. It was estimated by the actuary, I believe it was about $1 million, 1.5 million per year, and it was estimated that a million of it is Act 345. We're increasing it by two because we have two years of, two years of that PA 202 to cover. We have to cover this fiscal year's $1 million and the next fiscal year's $1 million, so that's why the budget went up by 2 million, approximately.
And that's pension only under Act 345, correct?
It's healthcare only, and if you look under.
Well, healthcare is 115, right?
The PA 202, that's what this extra money is for, is to cover that obligation by the state for PA 202. The Act 345's portion of it.
Right, which is pension, yes. Because the Act 345 is pension.
It's retiree health.
Yes, okay.
Pension and retiree health are two different areas, and if you look in.
That's why we wanted the 115 trust fund, was for the healthcare portion, and that's under the Public Act itself. And even, that was, you know, the attorney for the Act 345, excuse me, 345, even acknowledged and confirmed that for us, that that's why we needed the 115 trust fund, was to separate the healthcare, because it can't be in general fund, because that violates the law, where the pension goes into Act 345, and the healthcare goes into the 115 trust fund. That's why I was asking about that dollar amount, and how does that, what goes where, for example?
If you look on page 12.
Mm-hmm.
How far down? Okay, so if you go about halfway down, you'll see 345 OPED prefund, which is what the state's mandating, and that's where you're seeing about the $2 million. And then, in the general government, you'll see the same. The one below it is the general government portion, and then you'll see some in the library and the water fund as well.
I see that.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselman Abdullah.
Controller, I don't know if these are something that you're going to answer, just in case. But this will be on page two of revenues. I noticed that the cable fees had dropped quite drastically, be it Comcast, WOW, and AT&amp;T. And then, we suddenly had peg fees of $162,000. So the first question is, the drop from like $620 with Comcast to $492, $280 with WOW to $180, and then $235 with AT&amp;T to $140, and then we had peg fees of $162. Do you know, I had two other questions, but let's start with that.
Okay, so I, to make things clear for the Council, I pulled out the peg portion of Comcast, WOW, and AT&amp;T. So all three of those budgets went down by the amount that would have been pegged.
Separated them?
Yes, but you also have to take into account that I think that there has been a down chair on the total collection of Comcast, WOW, and AT&amp;T. This is based on my estimates. I already had three out of the four quarters. I added an assumption for the fourth quarter, which is a rounding of what they had, and this is where I'm estimating what we'll get next year. And that's what I put into the budget, and I can also see the portion of the peg.
Okay.
So that's how I got to those numbers.
Two more questions. One of them was on the election income. That went from nothing on amended budget in 1819 to $45,000. Do you know what that is exactly?
That is going to be, I believe, for the presidential. We get reimbursed by the federal government for the presidential, so you don't see that reimbursement too often. It's only every couple of years. If there's a special election, like a school, they might reimburse us. But this in particular, I believe, is for the federal.
Okay, and the last question is, on the cost recovery for the fire department, went from 60 to 120. Do you know what that is?
That is for a grant. That is for the safer grant.
Oh, okay, got you, thank you.
Anyone else before I sit down? Revenue?
Last one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Page two. Any questions or concerns, or should move on? Anything?
You love.
Page, hey, now, page three. Any concerns, questions? And page four.
Madam Chair.
Counselman Costa.
On page three, the ice arena rent, is that coming along as planned, or is?
No, I think he's been too slow. I made contact with him last week. He did come in and pay $22,000 in building permits, but buildings should be, already have been started in construction. And I had words to effect with him.
But at the same time, Counsel, wasn't it, wasn't there like no rent for a few months, as I recall?
Yeah, but I was concerned about when the building was going to go up.
Oh, okay.
But we're still getting the rent, right? He's paying rent.
Not sure we can see it all, right? Isn't that what you guys?
Yeah, you guys deferred all the rent.
He is such a feedback busy guy.
The original agreement that Gary Miyake, myself, and Ken Greival called for rent from the get-go.
Any further questions on this page? Okay, next, we have page four. Oh, we were on page four. So let's go on to page five.
Madam Chair.
Counselman Fazey.
So the legal fees, is, will that go on that page for the Council, or are we going to move it to 15?
It goes on page 15.
Okay, can we add an item for the council packets?
Yeah, that would, we need to add item 730.000 for council packet expenses.
What page are you on?
Page number five.
What do you want to add?
730.000 for council packet expenses to have them delivered.
So you're going to have a separate service?
Yes.
Okay, because police department will not be delivering more packets to the Council.
I mean, is there a reason why?
Yeah, they should be doing police work, and it's been an aggravation that I hear from the department all the time. I got a real nasty email from the Chair, so I cut it off.
At this point, let's not put that here, we can discuss that at another place in time. At this time.
Can we get clarification on what happened?
Yeah, I don't understand this, honestly.
Um.
Why can't we just pick it up ourselves?
The mayor has decided no longer have the police department deliver our packets, so at this point in time, we are responsible for our own council packet expenses to be delivered. So that's why we have to add this item line in if we want our packets still delivered like we always have been. The police department will no longer do it, according to the mayor. He stopped it. That was per his order.
Counselwoman Hicks Clayton.
I think Counselman Abdullah was before me.
Go ahead. Did you decide?
So, Mr. Mayor, then, according to what the chairperson's saying, that it's going to be stopped, you're stopping it, or is there a reason?
Yeah.
What is it?
I couldn't get five, a half hour extra to do the agenda this morning, but I'm constantly getting objections from the police department that they're not able to function, and they would be more, more willing to work on police matters and delivering packets. Many of them find it very demeaning.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Counselman, our Counselwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you. So when I read this today, you know, I've been on Council, like I said, this is seven and a half, going on eight years, and this is the first I've heard of this ever happening. But of course, our police are not necessarily held accountable for that, they're not, it's not their job responsibility. I get that. I fully support law enforcement and what they're doing, I understand. But I will tell you that it didn't come to a head until what you just shared, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, and I'm not part of that discussion, so I'm going to stay out of it, but quite frankly, I'll save us the money, and I'll pick up the packets myself and deliver them to people.
Good, I agree myself.
Because I'm not going to spend the taxpayers' dollars on something that I think, really, if it's tit-for-tat, and I don't want to be disrespectful, but I feel like I'm in middle school. And it should never be this way. This is our community. We work for you. I don't understand why we have to act like this. We're adults. I will deliver the packets myself.
Okay, wait, we've got Counselman Wenzel, please.
Well, I'm a little bit disappointed, because we have up to 10, 12, 13 kids that play in my, I live on a corner, play in our yard, and they kind of look forward to seeing the policeman come by. And the officers are really nice, they spend a few minutes with them. Sometimes they give them a little bad, stick-on badges. And I didn't know if Chief Volta Torney wants to comment on this. Is this something that's been bothering you for a while? It's been an issue, or?
Chief, would you like to come up to the microphone and let us know how you feel?
I'm really disappointed.
It's up to you, but I made the decision. I'm not deferring it to the chief.
I understand, but it appears to be an ongoing problem that we were not aware of, so I'm going to give the chief a fair chance to let us know what he has to say.
I'm following the orders of the mayor on why we're not delivering them. But over the years, when they're not delivered on time, we're going to get calls, well, where are my packages, what's going on? A little hostility, but then, once the reason is explained, they seem to settle down. I find it kind of redundant. We, do we buy computers and email, and everything comes electronically? I thought we were kind of moving away from paper to that, so personally, that's my take on it. The officers have to find it in their shift to get it done, or we're paying them overtime to do it. So those are the big issues that we're dealing with. And we try to make the best out of a situation. That's why when they're doing it, they're talking to the kids. So we try to make the best out of every situation we're handed.
Counselor Chair.
Counselman Muscat.
I'm one willing to pick mine up, too. I'm six, seven minutes away from the city hall.
Well, and they're here. I mean, they're here. I mean, they're here.
Yeah, and, 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 you know, sometimes you get them at 10, 11 o'clock, depending on what the runs that are police officer making, and so I appreciate that, but I'm like Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton, we all live pretty close to City Hall. I mean, it's not like we live very far away. I personally will pick mine up. I have no issue with that.
Councilman Abdullah.
I mean, I got, I got no problem with picking it up, but the only challenge that we've got is, remember, this has already been a challenge trying to get through this because we get these late Thursday night typically, so let's say it's not ready until late Thursday, and then we're closed here on Friday, so that means, as a council person, we can't get the, the actual hard copy until Monday now.
Well, you have a key to the front door, and they could put it in our mailboxes.
Uh, if they put it in the mailboxes, maybe that'd be an option, yeah.
Because we do have the, yeah, access, so we could do it.
That's an option.
That way, if it's, you know, yeah. Yeah.
Pick mine up, too. That's no problem. Now, Councilman Wensel and Councilman Costa, you live a little bit further than a few of others. How do you feel about it?
It'd be inconvenient, for sure, to come pick them up. I mean, I'll go with the flow, whatever everybody decides, but you know, I'm just a little bit disappointed, and that's my personal feelings.
Thank you. Councilman Costa?
I'm just down the street from City Hall. I go for a walk every day, so I could walk, but as long as I go into the mailboxes, I'd have to get Tom's key, which, and then I could, Tom lives a couple of blocks from me, but, and I agree, the, we, we do have the tablets. We were going to, when I was first elected as a state rep, my secretary, who had worked for the past six reps, I always made up a book, a binder, and I finally had to tell her, look, because it was all on the computer, but in the old days, they had a, had a big, like laundry basket thing, and they'd push it over, and then they'd give out all, because he read everything, but yeah, we're, we're moving past that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
So, we're adding the 3,500 for the training?
That's what I was gonna ask, Madam Chair, so the education.
Go ahead, Councilman Basie.
So we discussed at the, one of the meetings, to add 3,500 for the training, especially...
Now, that's a total of 3,500, or 35 in addition to what?
Well, there's nothing right now.
Nothing there.
I haven't seen nothing, okay. So what line item are we gonna have that one?
It's the same as 101 dash 101 960 dash, I mean, point 000.
Okay, so it will be a total of 3,500 under 101 dash 101 dash 960 dot 000. That's a change that we will be making then, and that is for travel expenses or training for city council if we choose to use it.
Hey, Madam Chair, I'm just curious, whose discretion is that? So is that something, who would decide who uses what and where? Just curious.
It would be like the MML training and stuff.
No, I know, I know.
I mean, I, I don't know, we've never had a trouble with anybody abusing it. Quite honestly, nobody really used it, but it's there. In case something comes up new that we need to learn, we got it anyway. If not, it just goes back into the budget.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, traditionally, when that was originally added, and that would have been, I don't remember, but it's been a few years, and it was like, on average, the reason the amount was, and I recall this, it was 500 per year annually, average 500 per year, per city council member for educational training, continuing education, because certainly, it's always changing for us, and we need to participate in MML and Semco and things like that.
Thank you. Any other discussion in regards to this? Okay, I guess we're done with page number five. Page number six, really nothing changed there. Page number seven, what did the district court?
There's nothing there. Have I answered my questions?
Okay, yeah. Page number eight. Nothing changed there. We have page number nine, the mayor's office.
The only thing I'd like to see something in there to kinda fix that office up.
I mean, that's omitted from here, but that's, you know, ever since I've known you and come and seen you in that office, that's, that's not a mayor's office.
Okay, now we are on page number 10.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Basie.
Again, you know, the pay raises, until we go to five-day work week, if we stay part-time, we should just keep the pay, salaries as, as they are right now.
Council Chair.
I, I'm gonna speak. I think that we do need to give a raise. Go ahead, Councilman Muscat.
Well, I was, I'm okay with giving raises. I'm sure that everybody has their own opinion on how much they get, okay? I know the national average is about 3.7% is what they, is the national average, and, but again, for this kinda money, we have to work five days a week. We've, we've done, we've gone over the hurdle of the 30% given to, to the hourly employees. There is no reason why we don't take that sign out in front of City Hall that says closed on Friday. No reason for it whatsoever. Everybody needs to be at work every single day of the week, Monday through Friday. I mean, City Hall opens up at 8:00. Everybody should be here at 8:00 in the morning. I was here the, the week of the flood, and we had a lineup of people sitting outside the mayor's office, and the mayor's office was closed. Should not be that way. Should not be that way. Not, and then, like I said, I'm okay with whatever raises that the mayor wants. I'm okay with the raises that this body wants to do, as long as we're open for five days.
Okay, well, at this point, I don't think that, we could look at that in the future, but we do need to look at some kinda raise. We need to do something here.
Absolutely.
I've done a lot of thinking, and, somebody's phone's going off.
That's my dial dying.
I'm hearing it sound.
It's not vibrating.
Thank you. Okay, um, there needs to be some kinda raise. We did give our union employees, what was it, it's a 1% raise with the contract this year, so I think we should at least extend that to everybody who need, you know, hasn't gotten a raise, so at least they're getting a raise the same as the union employees. I think it's fair that they get it. I mean, I'm not in favor of not giving a raise. I think I, we should give a raise.
I agree. Yes. Yeah, Madam Chair, I would concur with that. I think, no, we want to give, you know, a raise. It's fair. I think, again, with Councilwoman Muscat, the national average is 3.7, 3 and a half-ish. When I was, you know, gave raises to my staff from corporation, I was capped. I mean, I only had so much to give, and you didn't exceed that. Plus, you did evaluations, and that's how you ranked people and how much raises they're gonna get, and it's not for me to say how you're getting your raises or not, because that's not my job. It's not my position. I, I, I hope you're getting that kinda feedback. I think it's important to professional development, as well as overall how you feel, right? I mean, it's good for you as employees. We want what's best for our employees, including our department heads, because they have a very important role, you know, rounding up that department, but I think what is fair is fair, and I would agree with you that I would not exceed, you know, like I said, 1 to 2%, I wouldn't, you know, I think that is fair.
That's what the union gave anyways to the employees, so we shouldn't be consistent with everybody and not be unfair.
Yeah, yeah.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
So if somebody can answer for me, like, in this particular case, I mean, let's talk about the elephant in the room. We're talking about, you know, Chrissy's position. So what was the pay, I mean, we have here the 2018, 19 pay, which was at 54,000. Who can, I'm sure she can, but who can answer what it was previous to that? How long has it been at that particular level?
Elizabeth, can you, or Linda? Well, a lot of these people took a 10% pay cut. They never got the 10, yeah, they never got restored.
Okay, so...
2010 or 11 is, she got the pay cut in 2011. She hasn't seen any increase.
To 54,000?
Yeah. She was making...
It's been at 54,000 since 2011?
Hasn't seen an increase. The last increase I got was 2011.
Okay, so personally, I'd like to make a proposal that we go a little bit more than 1%. I personally would like to propose maybe closer to about 63,000.
I think there was one employee that took a 30% cut, and they were not brought back up to the 30% either.
And not have no problem reimbursing them. If somebody took a pay cut, the fact that the economy's doing better now, they should get their money back. It's only fair.
Right.
So this is not, nothing against whoever the other person is.
Plus, we're not full-time either here, so...
I understand, but...
Like I said, I'm trying to be fair.
No, I get it.
And what we gave the union, and if we wanna give the union more, that's great, then we should give everybody what the union got.
I have.
Because that's the majority of our workers.
Councilman Muscat.
You know, if we, to me, the fair thing to do is add the 10% that they lost, and then give them a raise from there. That would be the fair thing to do.
And that's how I came up with 63.
I agree with that, too.
2%, 3%, whatever, how much did you say?
I said 63,000, because that would give them the 10% back, roughly $5,000, and then additional raise. You know...
I agree with that.
I'm just giving you, like, my opinion. If somebody's been with any company for a long time, working in the same company, has allegiance to the company...
They need, they need to have a raise.
They took a pay cut, you gotta give them their money back when the, when the times are a little better. That's just my opinion.
I agree with it, and that's what I would like to see happen, but again, it's, to me, it's contingent on working.
Full-time.
Full-time, five days.
And, and the five-day work week, I've said it publicly five billion times, I'm in a million percent in favor of that. I don't believe we should be working four days.
So give them the 10% and have a five-day work week?
I have no problem with the five days. I've wanted that every time.
That sounds fair.
But at the same time, I don't know if it's within our jurisdiction right now to change into a five-day work week.
Because when we took the pay cut, they were at a five-day work week. They went to a four-day work week, and part of the compensation was taking a 10% pay cut.
I think 63,000 would be a good fair thing to start with.
So if we give that 10% back, they should go back to at least the five-day work week to make up for what they were getting before, to compare the two to what they had.
But the reality, as we speak today, we can't switch it to a five-day work week, today, as we speak. One of the, one of the challenges, because I, look, I, I've wanted this five-day work week from day one.
It's a letter of understanding with the union.
Or people take a pay cut to four days. The challenge has been, as I understood, it was something with the contracts and the unions, and it just cannot be switched over just like that.
Yeah, we, we had an amount, and the council has to take it back.
The, the amount is gone now, the 30% is gone, as we sign a new contract, so I, I think there was something in there that said that we give them notice, a, a, a certain amount of notice, that we go to, back to work for five days, and I think...
Yeah, there's a letter of understanding that said that.
Yeah, and, and I think we should invoke that.
No, there's got, that, that's, yeah, misunderstanding of that. If it was that easy, I'd do it right away, do it tomorrow, but that's not the way it works.
Well, I wanna see that, because I, I believe I saw that, that there was a letter of understanding, that we gave them X amount of time, notice that we go back to work five days a week. We, that's the big scuttling point with, with, at least it was with me, about that 30% raise if we went to five-day work week. We eliminated that 30%. It was gone. So we have to go back and look at our, our paperwork here, and I'm gonna find it.
I remember it specifically being struck from that contract.
Because this, this, this has always been, been, I've been thinking of, is a five-day work week for this budget, and, and I'm willing to do whatever it takes. I don't care if it's $80,000 a year, as long as it's five-day week. If it's not, I'm not giving nothing. Taxpayers deserve this place being open five days a week with everybody at work at 8:00 in the morning.
Yes.
Not 10, 11, 12, but 8:00 in the morning, when they show up at the door.
Agreed. Concur. Okay, so...
Madam Chair.
Councilman Costa.
Well, I remember, I think last year, we had two different budgets with four days and with five days. I mean, I agree with everyone, and I also agree that, you know, at least the next six months, we're not gonna be going back to five days, so if we're doing a budget for this year, and I also agree with Councilman Muscat that, I remember that was struck out of the, out of the union contract, and our, our big expenses are police and fire, which pretty much stay the same. Is that correct, Mayor?
The, they are on a 24/7, so, I mean, that's, impact is with the, it's not asking me, you're more heights, whatever it is.
The TPOAM.
PTOAM, yeah.
I didn't research it before. I didn't know that was gonna come up as an issue, but I would strongly...
We've been talking about it for a long time.
I would strongly suggest that the question be raised to the labor attorney.
But I mean, we've been talking about a five-day work week forever. This is not some, this is not a surprise. We campaigned on it.
Okay, conversation in the back, please. We're trying to discuss the budget.
But we, you know, this is not a surprise. We've talked about it openly for a number of years, number of months now, that a five-day work week. It's not a secret.
We had closed meetings even on it for several years.
You know, it's...
Several years.
To me, going through all of this without going to a five-day work week, I might as well just go home. I don't care what they give in raises, what everybody decides, as long as it's five days. I don't care.
Council Chair.
Councilman Wensel?
When I was campaigning for city council, I, no matter where I went, who I was talking to, one of the things I always mentioned was getting the city back on a five-day work week, and this is our opportunity now to take whatever steps are necessary to get this done. I mean, I'm, I'm with Councilman Muscat. I mean, I don't even, if it doesn't involve five-day work week, I don't even wanna vote on this. I mean, that's, I mean, we gotta, we gotta figure out a way to do it. If we just have to have, you know, the salary people on five days to start right, right off the bat, figure something out. The numbers are, we have to figure the numbers, though. We just can't come up with numbers on this tonight, you know? We can approve something tonight.
Well, their salaries are salary, that's...
Well, yeah, I mean, that's the only ones we could actually have on a five-day work week tomorrow.
How do you work five days?
Yeah. I work, you know, I, you know, I worked...
Jack, we want the office open with everybody staffed for five days. Now, I understand that you work.
Can I just say something?
I've got the, I've got the floor right now.
Okay, okay, point of order, guys. Let's, let's be recognized before we speak.
Yeah, I, you know, I was a union plaster for over 40 years, and very labor-intensive work, every day. My biggest yearly income I got was $67,000, and that was literally working seven days of work, hard labor, and to look at these 80,000, even though if you're skilled at a trade, I mean, it's hard for me to, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll give what everybody deserves, but, you know, I, I mean, I worked my butt off my life.
I guess what we can do is, we can look at possibly opening, opening the city hall five days and giving the 10%, but now, before they, we get to that point, I still feel we should at least give a 1% now, and then a 10% more once we open city hall five days a week, because we wanna give them something that's what the union employees got, and we should extend it to them, so they get that at least.
Yeah.
It's only fair.
It is fair.
I mean, I don't wanna not give them a raise, because that wouldn't be fair.
But at the same time, Council Chair, we're putting a condition, and again, I'm But at the same time, Council Chair, we're putting a condition, and again, I'm fully in favor of five days, and if I was an employee, I get it, I'd want to work four days, too. I mean, it's pretty cool. I get it. You know, I wouldn't want that. But I'm fully in favor, from the legislative branch, I'm fully in favor of five days a week. But I'm just saying, just to be practical, and I don't know if it could be, you know, it's not like just, you just switch it into five days. I don't think it's that simple. So in essence, we're putting a condition that cannot be met. So if you're saying, you know, we'll give you a raise, but only if we switch to five days of work week, but it's not going to happen, at least not in the foreseeable future, so in essence, you're not giving them a raise. So I think if that's the case, then might as well just be straight up and say, we're not giving you a raise.
Well, actually, we are giving them the 10% that they were making, and they took a cut on it from going for four days. That was the condition. They went to four days, they took a 10% pay cut, but they only had to work four days. If you want that 10% back, then you have to go back to what they were doing to get that extra 10%, which would be five days, and then you give them a raise on top of that.
And I respect that, and I respect that. But let's keep in mind, it's a little bit more than just the department heads. If we switch to five days of work week, and again, I'm going to make it clear, I'm in favor of it, but I don't know if, it's not just the department heads that would have to chop, it'd be a change in everybody, unions, everyday employees.
Talking four hours here.
I'm in agreement.
They're already getting paid for four hours on Friday.
They're getting paid, but they're not here, okay? Or at least, most of them are not. So you're going to switch the whole system to five days of work week? I'm just saying, it's not as simple as just switching a lever. It's not that simple.
We managed to go from five days down to four days, so it's, there must be some kind of process involved.
Yes.
So I, you know, I, I'm in agreement with Councilman Abdullah about, and you, about giving a raise. We have to give a raise. People don't work five, six, seven, eight years without a raise. So a raise, again, we have to come up with a, a number that we're willing to give. Somebody's said 1%. I've said, you know, 3, 3.7 was the national average, or 2%, 3%. So we need, before we continue, we need to come up with a number for everybody.
Right, I agree.
This is going to be fruitless.
Sure.
Councilman Abdullah.
So, so the buck stops with the mayor, obviously. I mean, you know, you're the leader here. So being that the council's been, and this is not the first year that we've been in favor of five-day work week. I mean, I tell you, every time I've been on council, even before I got on council, I was in favor of it. And we've mentioned it, as Councilman Musket mentioned multiple times. So that being the case, today, in your opinion, what would it take to switch to a five-day work week, and what would stop it from switching to five-day work week? In, just a synopsis.
The, the only thing that would stop it, in my estimation, would be the union agreement.
Okay, I remember you mentioning something about union, but give me a little more details in regards to that, also for the audience to understand a little better.
Well, in the conditions of the contract, it spells out the hours and the time, and that was a major roadblock when we were doing the negotiations. While those of us in leadership may not have liked the dollar amount, correct me if I'm wrong, Elizabeth, we were just, we couldn't come up, the mayor and the union, on a reasonable number. So we came up with a number. The extra cost, the best, Vince McCary came up with a good analysis at that time, but that, that's the only real major impediment, and yes, it is.
We, we did away with the 30%. We did away with it. It's just giving them four hours pay.
At this point, let's just move on. Let's just, at this point...
It's in the contract, we eliminated the 30%, okay?
At this point, let's not get into a debate. Let's just figure out a certain percentage right now, and then we'll come back, and we're going to do our, I'll do homework on, in regards to...
The labor contract.
The letter of understanding that thought was filed. I'll chuck into it.
Yeah, 2011.
Then we'll come back, and we'll readdress it, but do it quickly.
Talk to the union members, talk to the attorneys, try to work through it, get it done.
I have the paperwork at home, I'm sure I do.
I know I have the paperwork, too. So let's just do, I, I'm suggesting 1%, and then if we go to five days, let's do 10 more besides that.
Yes, agree.
Does that sound fair?
Yes. It's across the board for everybody.
Take, you can take a poll on it and see what everybody thinks.
Well, all those in favor of...
Well, we can't vote, I mean...
It's concurrence.
All right, Councilman Wenzel, are you in favor of a 1% increase?
I, I'm in favor of that, but I'm thinking, what they, back in, what was it, 20, what was it, 2011?
2011 is where they did the agreement.
2011. Just say, just say someone's making $60,000, and they, they went down to $50,000. So we're going to give them back up to $60,000. They kind of deserved, for so many years, they haven't gotten a pay raise, so we have to take that into consideration, too.
You know, I would be, I would, all right, instead of figuring, I don't know what the numbers are now, I would be willing to do that, and plus the 10%, if we can figure out, we go back on the union contract and see what each year the union got besides. That would be the fair thing to do, too. We don't have the numbers with us tonight, unfortunately. I'm not sure, why don't we start with the 1% and move on forward from that? At least we know that's...
I just think, honestly, if you give somebody a 1% raise, it's a slap in the face, honestly.
I agree.
Giving them no raises...
3% then, if that's the national average.
No problem with 3% either.
And it can always be amended. So, but we do need to, you know, talk about the 2011 agreement, talk to the attorney, talk to the union members, and see if we can come to an agreement to get it done, to get five days restored.
Do you want to do the...
And this is across the board for everybody.
I, minimum 3%, because 1% is just, it's...
Okay.
I mean, I'd be shooting myself in the foot.
Yes.
Yes.
I, the Consumer Price Index for 2018 was, was 1.9%, and it was 2.1% for 2016 and 17, so, yeah, 1% would be half of what the CPI went up.
But that's what our union people got, though.
So, so...
They got 1%. That's why, that's why we came up with that number.
We have to separate the two, though, right now.
Okay.
Right now, we need to separate the two. That contract, we voted on it. I mean, if we had objections to the 1%, we should have done it then.
Yes.
I, I don't know if we really can do that or not. Okay, but we do have control over this.
Okay, let's, let's, come on and decide somewhere. We're going to be here a long time. Let's move on.
3% is...
Controller.
I just want to make a note, I'm the one that does the payroll, and the unions have been all made whole, and cumulatively in the last couple of years, they have gained somewhere around 13% to 14%. I don't want to, it might even be more, but at least 13% they've been...
I don't remember it being that way, because I do remember...
Well, they got like a lump, when they renegotiated the contract in 2017, they got like a lump amount, and then they've been getting 1% annually since then.
I'd like to see that on paper, if you can get it to me, that would be great.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Just want to get a clarification. You're talking about with fringe benefits, or you're talking about just straight-up raises?
Hourly rate. I know how that works.
I know, I know.
I want to give a clarification.
I want to go to five days, too. I'm not fighting now.
I hope that comes through last year, but I can show it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, last time, Councilman Costin.
The grant coordinator was making, he donated back or reduced the salary to 75, so he's at 59.4 now.
That also comes out of CDBG, though.
Right.
That's a different...
Right. It doesn't come out of city money, so...
All right, let, no, let's just decide right now what we're going to do in regards to the others, and then move on. We need to get moving at this point.
We have to, yeah, we have to come up with...
Do I give the national average?
I think, I think 3% is a fair, fair thing right now.
Okay, let's just do 3%. I'm with it.
3% for all salary employees that are affected here.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, are you in with 3%? Wenzel, Councilman?
I'd like to see a higher raise.
Councilman, Councilor, are you...
3%.
3%, okay. Majority rules on that. We'll do 3% for now.
And hopefully work back to the five days.
And I would still like to look at the five days and get more than that.
But for the record, the 10% comes back into play if we go to five days.
Correct.
I don't want to shortchange them, either, for that.
No, absolutely, I agree with that.
Because they did not get it back. And it's not fair, no matter what you think of people, they have to get paid what they're supposed to get paid.
All salaries across the board that was asking for an increase, they will all get 3% for now. And then we will come back again later and address possibly more if we open five days.
But, Madam Chair.
Council, I'm sorry, we've already decided. It's just going to be 3% for all the directors, controller, administrative assistant. Am I missing anybody?
If you do it for all...
Well, that's directors.
Wouldn't it be non-salary?
Yes.
No.
All the non-union people, is that what it would be, best classifieds?
They're non-union.
Or no, not, deputy directors would not be...
How do you say it? How do we say that?
Mrs. Cooper, for each one.
In general, we follow the standards of pay benefits of the union contract to non-union employees, with the exception of the directors.
So we will give it to the part that was excluded from the union percentage.
But I just want to clarify, some people did not get a 10% pay decrease, so are you giving them a 10% again, over and above what they're...
No, we're not going to...
You know what I'm saying, I'm just making sure.
We're bringing, this one group, the only group we're talking about...
Only the ones that took the 10% pay cut would get 10%. But the ones that didn't, I just want to make sure we're clear. The ones that did not get a 10% pay cut are not getting a 10% increase.
Correct.
They're getting a 3% only.
Yes.
Correct. Okay, just want to clarify.
Madam Chair. So, yeah, 3% from the budgeted amount, or the actual amount for last year?
From the last...
Last year.
Well, if you're making, if you're making $60,000 last year, you get 3% of that.
So not the, not the budgeted amount, the actual amount?
So you're saying not the newly budgeted...
3% of the current salary.
The actual amount, add 3%. That's what this is all about. All right, let's move on, page number 11. Anything there? Okay, let's go on page number 12.
I would like to request from the council, I'm looking at all the cars, I may eliminate two cars, but what I would like is a...
Where are we talking, the page?
When we get to that page, we could, isn't it on this page?
Are we on 12?
Yes, okay.
Yeah, so I just was hoping you might add an account for $4,000 or $5,000 that would be mileage, if I eliminate the two cars, and the people could put in mileage on city work.
Whose cars would those be?
Where are we looking at this here?
What would we do with the cars they're driving now?
Well, I'd probably sell them or get rid of them.
What line item are we looking at?
You don't have a, it would be a new account called...
You know what, let's address that at a later time, because it's already in here like this.
Well, we have to do it if that's what he plans to do.
Yeah, I'll let you know which vehicles it is, but I just...
It should have been part of the budget presentation that was due April 1st.
Okay.
Right now, and, you know, I have no problem coming back to that. If that's what you choose to do, please just write it up and let us know.
So we're not going to discuss it now?
Nope.
Okay, because I do have a question about that, it's a liability for the city, but I can hold it.
Nope, we'll, we'll process it first when we get to it. Okay, we're on number 13.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
We, I have a check mark on it here, so I believe we've addressed it, and I just want to make sure my recollection is correct. We went from $5,000 on publication newsletter to $40,000 budgeted. That was just, I don't know who can answer that, maybe the controller, that was just a shift as far as which line item, where we're going to have it budgeted for, whether it was general government, or I think it was...
Cable.
Cable. Okay, so it's both.
A good part, yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're on page number 14. Move on to page number 15.
Madam Chair.
Councilman?
This is where we need to add legal fees for council.
Okay, yeah, we did have it last year, so we need to add them again. There'd be line item 101...
We need to move that, whatever we had, 35,000, since we didn't use it, maybe just put 100,000 for this, this budgeted year.
Okay.
And I don't know why we have 200,000 for the other legal fees. We need to keep it the same as the last year.
164,708?
190,000.
Oh, sorry, 190, I see, because we only use 164 of that.
Madam Chair.
Wait a minute, let's get this right first. Okay, so you're proposing the change to 101-210-826.101, put 100,000 in, because they have nothing there, then 101-210-826.000, change it from 200,000 to 190,000. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Council Chair.
Councilman Abdullah was first.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I just want to make sure, clarification. The legal fees, what's being proposed right now for the council legal fees, this would be for the attorney for the council to go from 35,000 to 100,000?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm against that. I think, I think it's just way too much money to spend for the council directly, when we already have a corporation council that we're spending money on. So I'm against that.
Councilman Musket.
We have to take in count that we all voted to give the corporation council a raise, if I'm not mistaken. So we make sure that we have that covered in the budget. I, I don't want to have to come back with, for an amended budget later on down the road, and then we all say, what the hell happened to money? Okay? Amended, you know, right now, the activity is 164, how much more time we got left?
Well, that was as of March, so that would be three additional months.
So we're probably approaching 190 now.
Yeah, and you're right, to get up to 200 was based on the extra $4 or $5 an hour.
You know, if we're not using it, we don't use it. It just goes back into the fund. I think we should just leave that alone.
Okay, leave it at 200, and that would be line item 101-210-826.000 will remain at 200,000.
Because we never know what legal services that the city may need, and I don't want to be caught short on that. And as far as the council legal fees, I think maybe we should just double what we have, instead of 100, go to 75. Yeah, we're not using it, it always goes back.
That's fine.
That's fine.
We can always also have a budget amendment on that, too.
Okay, so we have 75, okay, so now line item 101-210-826.101 is now 75,000.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Costin.
Well, yeah, that would be, to add the terms, would be 70,000, but we're...
We're 70, yeah, excuse me, it'd be 70, not 75.
We didn't even use it this year, so we've got 35,000.
But we double it, it would be 70, not 75.
Doubling would be seventy-five, but that's.
Seventy, seventy thousand.
Talking, I'm an attorney, you can burn through legal fees real fast, and for one branch of government to be firing at another branch, as we've all discussed before, that's, or, you know, as, as one of the other council members suggested, up to a hundred thousand, that's just a waste of tax credit money.
Okay, at this point, we have it down to seventy-five. Did you have anything to say?
Seventy, seventy.
Okay, all right, let me read it one more time to make sure, excuse me, Linda, back there gets it. One zero one dash two one zero dash eight two six dot one zero one is now seventy thousand. Is there any further discussion? Does everybody agree, except for Councilwoman Abdullah?
Ma'am, I would just like to suggest we keep it right around the same range, or if we want to add a little bit, let's make it forty, but I just think it's too much for just, we've gone for years and years and years and years and years and years without specific legal councils, specific for the city council only.
You're right.
And we went with thirty-five thousand last year, and to kick it up, I just don't think, I don't.
Again, if we don't use it.
Okay, if we don't use it, we can just give it back, no big deal. It's not like it's going to go somewhere else.
Unfortunately, Madam Chair, unfortunately, the council's at a point where some legal assistance is needed, and I think this is the first time we've seen that, when you say we've never had it before, and you're correct, Councilman, we haven't, but there hasn't been a need, where now there's a need, and it's quite unfortunate. I don't think anybody wants it to be that way.
Okay, let's not, let's not get into this at.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to explain.
You know, we don't need to, things here, we've figured it out.
Thank you.
I agree with Councilwoman Abdullah.
Thank you. And everybody else, Councilwoman Wenzel, are you okay with that?
I agree with that, seventy.
Okay. Basically, you're okay with seventy?
Yes.
Councilman Muscat, you're okay with seventy? Okay, seventy is what we're changing that to then, by majority of the council. Uh, next page is sixteen. Anything on that? Let's go on to page seventeen. That's pretty much all union anyway, so we can't touch that. Twenty.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Conston?
Yeah, I know that the, our controller, after our last controller fairly abruptly left, was hired in under certain arrangements and had her salary reduced.
That's on page twenty-one there.
That's on page one.
Twenty-one.
We're on page twenty, Councilman. So, is there any questions on page twenty? Let's move forward to page twenty-one. That's been pretty much decided by the three percent we already decided to give, so let's go on to page twenty-two.
So, Madam Chair.
We've already decided on everything on that page, it's either union or the three percent that we decided, Councilman, so there's no discussion on it.
Don't you understand?
I understand.
So, please, yeah, don't. Yeah, we're on page twenty-two. And then we go to page twenty-three, which that's already been decided to by the three percent. We go on to page twenty-four. That's the Board of Appeals. Okay, let's go on to page twenty-five, which is the Treasurer's Office.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Conston?
I know, our Treasurer had some thoughts on our controller's salary, they expressed.
I'm sorry, we're no longer on that page, there's no further discussion on that. That was pages before, and you keep bringing the same thing up, so let's move forward. Okay, we are on page twenty-five. That is the Treasurer's Office, and then page twenty-six, those are pretty much already set there, those salaries. Twenty-seven is the Information Tech Department.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you. When Dearborn came in and presented, and I have it in my notes, we requested a breakdown for a five-year plan. Did anybody receive that? I don't recall seeing it.
I did not.
I didn't get one.
So, respectfully, through the administration, through the Mayor's office, can we get that before we vote on the budget? Because we have, we haven't been, that information's not made available to us as requested.
Does anybody remember seeing it?
I had it in my notes.
No, they never sent it.
I know, we don't have it.
If they don't provide it, we're going to pull this out of the budget then, I guess, the whole page.
We've had a lot of problems with the email. And that was relevant today, when we called the city clerk's office. So, there are, there is a problem with the email, and it could have been sent and got lost in outer space somewhere.
I have from April thirtieth. Is that it?
The question, though, is with what we're paying Dearborn for this IT service, why are we having so much problem with? I mean, Dearborn's not having any problems with their email, why are we? I mean, that's a legitimate question.
Very good question.
I would defer to Doug.
Well, I understand that.
He explained it to me, but I, I'll tell you.
I mean, everything's going through them, but yet, they're not having problems, and I, you know, our.
We, wait.
Go ahead, please, I'd like to hear this.
I am not keeping on Dearborn.
Well, I know, I know.
Um, there was an issue with our old email host, Speakeasy, who went to a different account in September, changed names, and then emailed Linda, I think it was like in December, and said, we're no longer on, we're no longer going to support you. So, she had like maybe two days before Christmas to find something, she called Doug, we went with Bluehost. Bluehost has been a problem, but we went with Bluehost to get something in between. Council agreed to Office three sixty-five about three months ago, and since then, TARC's been trying to get Office three sixty-five. That will solve our email problems, that will also solve a lot of other issues with sharing and on universal, address books and other things like that.
Yeah, because I thought when we, when we, when we did that, I thought it was all going to be.
Well, and the problem with this Bluehost is that we don't get notified when they don't come back, so, like, when we're sending stuff to the state for the flood, I'm sending everything three times, and sometimes they say, why are you sending me stuff three times? Other times, you're not, and, and it's.
Yeah, my concern is, you don't get our emails either, right?
No, we, we get everybody's emails, some of them come through spam, some of them don't show up for a couple of weeks, but we do get everybody's emails eventually.
Now, I, I thought maybe when we went to that Office three sixty-five, that was going to change it, but it never.
It is. It hasn't happened yet, right.
Okay, well, no, I, that's good. You know, it's okay, I mean, but it, it's, it's just, I, you know, I'm not aware of, I thought we were going to switch over to it immediately, and obviously.
That's what our assumption was, too.
So, Doug, so Doug needs to explain to us what, what happened?
What Doug is saying is that TARC's having issues with licensing, that now they want three years, and they want different amounts, where it can't just be, like, you or I go to Best Buy and just buy it.
Yeah, you, everybody's got to, yeah, I went through that with Ford Motor, too, so.
Well, yeah, it's, I, I think it's a little ridiculous, and so does Doug.
Because it's multiple computers that it goes on.
Move on here.
Hold this out until we get that report.
Okay.
I'll send it first thing tomorrow, or if you want to make copies of it now, I'll give it to you.
Do you have it there?
Yeah.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah, we can make copies before we go.
That's a five-year plan? Is it the five-year plan?
Yeah.
Oh, we'd love to have a.
Is this the five-year plan?
I think we all have.
Not the five-year, I think it's the next two years.
No, we needed a five-year plan.
Yeah, this is the five.
They told us five-year.
It's five-year, but it started in two thousand seventeen, so it goes to twenty-two.
Yeah, that's.
That's it.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Conston?
Just so everybody knows, so, City of Dearborn just has Microsoft Suite two thousand ten, because to go to the cloud-based three sixty-five, that's, that's going to be fairly expensive.
We already did it, we already, we approved it. Okay. We already approved it.
Uh, but they, they use, they use a older version of Word, an older version of the suite.
Well, we paid for the new stuff, so we won it.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, let's move on to page number twenty-eight. Hey, that's the Building and Maintenance. Next, we have page twenty-nine, which we, uh, the union or the three percent. Next, on page thirty, is the Police Department.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
We see a lot of that, that high, was it overtime? I actually proposed that we, we reduce that amount and actually add police officers instead, because I know we're going to keep our police rested, and these guys are overworked, there's a lot of overtime, I think we should reduce that budget for overtime and add a few police officers. Whatever amount that we reduce, we add extra police officers.
Because right now, it's nine hundred thousand for overtime, that seems like a lot, too. I don't think other communities have it that high.
No.
That I've seen.
Because I did check a few area, a few municipalities, that is pretty high for the size of our city. I mean, I think we should add more police officers, you know, keep them fresh and rested.
What are you proposing?
I'm proposing reduce it to three hundred and add six police officers.
That sounds fair, because then we got more.
Reduce it to three hundred thousand?
Three hundred, and that's, you can add six police officers to the amount.
Which would be better for all the residents, because they would have more protection.
So, so you calculate whatever the salary, so it's like a hundred thousand dollars per police officer.
Madam Chair.
I don't know what the chief feels about that.
Councilwoman Abdullah?
So, I, I would be in favor of that, but I'd like to get a perspective, just to make sure, from a chief, as far as the logistics, whether that's workable or not.
Well, I think over the long run, we could probably work some, something that way, but over the short period of time, we're still down six officers, six officers, and I, we've got a couple in the background phase, so the overtime is used to pay for also special events, so we have officers working the Soho Festival, there's, the overtime isn't calculated just on the additional hours that the officers are working, their shift, it also includes all the extra details that they're working. So, to come in and cut it severely like that, without calculating how much overtime, I'd have to find the numbers on how much was spent in actual detail work, as opposed to man-hours working over their shift. So, there's, there's a two, there's a couple of different factors that go into it.
So, Chief, when you say you're, when you say you're missing six, you're short, no, I just wanted to clarify my question.
Go ahead.
When you're saying you're short six, you're not talking about based on this proposal, you're talking about excluding this proposal. Before we came in tonight, you were already short six, correct?
Correct. So, the numbers that were submitted were still short six officers.
Okay. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you. So, I agree with reducing the overtime and getting yourself a plan to get there, I think that's important, because it's a transition for your department. You want it to be smooth, you don't want to have interruption service. So, you're going from eleven new hires to seventeen, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and my question for you is, a few years ago, we met with the US Army, including people that came from Washington DC, with HR and the former police chief and the mayor, and we all agreed that the PACE program was a great program. In fact, Michigan State Police just signed their agreement with the PACE program, and it helps us with a hiring pipeline. I know you're doing lots of hiring, because you just had an officer swearing in on Monday, but if that's something that's going to help us, and it doesn't cost us any money, where do you see that falling into this? Because now, your, your number just got bumped to seventeen.
Lack of commitment on their part, I, we haven't had.
I'm sorry, lack of whose commitment?
Lack of commitment on the PACE part. There wasn't a lot of follow-through on the rent, so that's kind of where we're at with that.
That's interesting, because they, I heard a different thing from them, they're the US Army, so I'm not sure, I mean, because they wanted to do that, yes, and I'm actually meeting with them soon, so I'll verify that.
Please verify, but.
Yeah, yeah.
There was a lack of commitment, and we hadn't, up until you mentioned it, we haven't had, I haven't had a single call about it, I'm not sure if HR has had anything.
Yeah.
So.
Because it's interesting, because.
It kind of fell apart after that.
Yeah, and not to say you're not telling me the truth, I'm just saying, the Michigan State Police got it done, and I don't see why, and also Oakland County Sheriff Department does the PACE program.
Well, so, they could add officers, they could add officers, they could hire officers into different positions, Oakland County sheriffs could hire them into the jail without making them certified police officers.
That was part of the program, was accelerated, right, academy? That was all part of our discussion, was accelerated, which was passed into law, in fact, a former Senator Kenezic shared that with us.
But you have to have the people from the PACE program wanting to go into the accelerated academy to come to Dearborn Heights.
They did.
That's not.
No, they did, though.
No, they didn't. They, they weren't coming to Dearborn Heights. We weren't receiving any contact from them.
All right, I will follow up on that, and let's.
We gladly would take information from them.
Absolutely, because we talked about that, and they even sent somebody from Washington DC.
I was there.
And so, therefore, I'm very sure, from, again, I'm not going to argue the point, I don't want to debate, but I was told that we dropped the ball, all due respect.
Well, all due respect to you, they dropped the ball.
Oh, it's not me, it's not, it has nothing to do with me, sir.
I didn't bring this up, I'm just letting you know what happened at the Police Department and through HR.
Okay.
There was no conversation back to us. We were all ready to go forward, we signed the documents, we got their letter, literature.
Okay, Councilwoman Bazey.
So, before the next meeting, when we approve the budget, can we adjust this, chief? You know, come back?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of that.
Can we have a proposal for the next, I mean, can we revise that amount? I mean, I don't know what amount we can be revised it to, to add more, more police officers, if we can revisit that for the, before we approve the budget for next year?
I will work on the numbers for our overtime costs for where we're seeing them.
And add police.
And special events, our details.
And adding more police officers. Thank you, thank you, chief.
Councilman Muscat?
I've got two things. One, what special events are we talking about? And if they're privately held events, like, you know, if you have Saint Linus or Saint Sebastian's, has there, shouldn't they be paying for that, police?
So, they, they pay for that. Some events are paid fully by the city, or by the, the churches or schools, some of them, we are, to get them off the ground, we say we're paying, we're going to pay for half the officers, they're going to pay for half the officers, try to get events going. We have traffic enforcement that is conducted on an overtime basis, so that's where we have some of our expenses through that, and then we have overtime issues on the shift, so we have to break it down into where they're coming from.
Second.
Great to see that. Go ahead, Councilman.
Second, to drop it to, you know, why don't we just divide it in half, instead of going all the way to three hundred, make it four fifty? That would, that would be in between, and then, you know, God forbid that we have to do a budget amendment, we can always do that.
So, if we do that, can we add four police officers, extra four police officers, so for every hundred thousand, we can add one police officer?
Why don't you let the chief make the, look at the overtime and come back, and then you can make an educated decision on what you want to do.
At this point, let's just do the four fifty, then we can come back and readjust it once we have the exact numbers.
Yeah, I think so, we can at least vote on it.
An amendment's not a problem.
Line number one zero one dash three zero zero dash seven oh nine dot zero zero zero, that is, the overtime for the Police Department will now be four hundred and fifty thousand, with a possible adjustment with Chief Rupert Tony coming back with the information we need.
Madam Chair.
I just. Councilwoman.
Chief, what is our manpower at now? Whatever our manpower is at now, it's minus the six that you, we hope to hire, correct?
Right, fifty-five officers, so we're down six.
So, we now presently have forty-nine.
Forty-nine patrol officers assigned to the road. That doesn't include command officers.
And then, and then when, when the officers do narcotics, for example, detail with, you know, other, like down there with Drano, with other municipalities and so forth, there's overtime involved in that?
Yeah, so, we have officers assigned to DEA Task Force, FBI Task Force. Part of their overtime is paid through that task force group, but other, other portions, we have to pay, we have to make up.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? So, are we agreeing to take it to four fifty right now, at least? Okay. Next page is number thirty-one.
So, that was four fifty?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And four officers, correct?
Yes.
Was it four or six officers?
Oh, no, because we.
Four officers, oh, okay, four officers, okay.
Thank you.
Four officers.
Thank you.
Yeah, on page thirty-one, that's pretty much.
Same thing with EM Coordinator.
We haven't investigated something.
And, yeah, we delete that.
What's the EM Coordinator?
Emergency Manager.
Yeah, it also covers.
That's also covered under the three percent.
Yeah.
And then.
Remove the Investigative Services Secretary.
Okay. Sorry, Councilman Bazey, what did you say?
So, remove that Investigative Services Secretary.
It's already been deleted.
Yeah, it did, okay.
Your Investigative Services Secretary.
They really need that.
Investigative Services Secretary?
It should be.
That is a delete, I guess?
We have two lieutenants already.
Who does it right now?
The FOIA request that.
So, the, the records department is doing that right now. We're paying the lieutenant, he's in charge of preparing all the FOIA for that. So, hiring somebody who's not at a lieutenant's wage to do that work, and he actually will verify that the FOIA was created properly and submitted, so you're kind of.
Madam Chair.
Getting better work out of lieutenant by having somebody else do that work.
Councilman, Councilwoman Abdullah?
For me, because of the lower pay, A, and B, I think the Police Department has asked for, I know for sure, two years in a row, maybe a third, but I know for sure, two years in a row, and, and I'd like to trust their judgment that this is something that they need, and based on the study sessions that we've had, or at least the conversations that we've had in multiple sessions, I know two sessions for sure, I felt very strongly, based on conversations with them, or, or the presentations, I'd say that they needed this. So, personally, I'd be in favor of keeping that in there.
Excuse, so.
Any help we can give to our Police Department, I think is important.
For the FOIA, it's, it's so low, because it's, it'll take us a while to get, get them hired, so that's, we're kind of anticipating them.
But I remember trying to FOIA something from you last year, and you told me if I asked for a FOIA, you would hand me a blank piece of paper. I do specifically remember that, after one of the council meetings, and so I'm not in favor of this. You, if you're going to hand me a blank piece of paper, I'm not going to take it.
Well, I have no idea what you're talking about.
I do.
I don't. I just, can you be more specific?
Um, well, Chief Gavin was there, too, and so was Peachy, and we were all discussing the possible FOIA, and I won't say it publicly, because I'm not here to embarrass anybody. If you want to talk privately, I'll be happy to talk to you at another time, because I'm not here to.
No, I'm just, all right.
All right, so, yeah, I'm not in favor of that either. All right, so yeah, I'm not in favor of that either.
Because it was, okay.
Would that be a layperson or a police officer that does that job?
That'd be a civil service employee, a non-union, so it's a layperson. You're immaculate.
Yeah, I would like to see a police officer do that. I mean, it's got to be, you know, I mean, we're talking, we're talking sensitive information too, that they're all looking at.
Well.
That could be looking at.
Exactly. I mean, they're not just coming off the street and having access. We do our background checks, they get training in, training in clearances to do it, so.
Thank you.
Oh, I don't have anything. I just sent everybody. Councilman Wenzel?
I'm good.
So what is everybody's thoughts on this one? Do you want to?
Keep it the way it is.
With no one there, okay.
Wait.
No, you won't. Councilwoman Abella?
Yeah, I'd like to add that. I'm in favor of adding that.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I concur to leave it in there.
Okay.
Leaving it in?
Mm-hmm.
What'd you say?
Yeah.
I'm just concerned about the qualifications of this person, like Mr. Moskowitz said. I had, it took me a week to get a CFO request, and, you know, for me to get something, and you're going to let just some person at the civil service have access to all this really vital information? I mean, that could be pretty, it's not, not just parking tickets or anything like that. You know, this is, police officers should be doing this job, someone that's, plus I'm in favor of this job being filled by a union member.
I would be in favor of hiring another police officer instead of this, because that would benefit us more.
Like I said, I'd like a union member to have this job.
Okay. So where are we at? I'm trying to figure it out. You saying we should just hire a police officer? Because I agree, we should do a police officer instead of.
Yeah, I agree, police officers should be doing this.
I think of police officers too.
Mm-hmm.
I would leave it the way it is. A lot of the requests are, some of the bigger attorney's offices automatically request all the accident reports and so forth, and that's, how many FOIA requests do you get other than, for like, police reports and that type of thing? Is that 10%? Is it 50%?
10%, the amount of.
Non, so, so like, for every, in Dearborn, every case, they would do a FOIA request, and then to get, you know, certain things, instead of a discovery order. So what percentage of the FOIA requests, if you know, are not related to like, you know, misdemeanor cases, auto accidents, that kind of thing?
So the, the non-accident-related or. Corporate requests, those are, they're handled daily by the personnel and records. We're compiling those numbers, and they spend more time at the window instructing people how to pull up video for their speeding ticket or, you know, or a police report, so, I mean, the specific numbers I don't have with me.
Okay, thank you. All right.
So we've confused it, because neither is like, two issues.
Yeah.
So let's, why don't we do one with whether to allow them to hire one, and then B would be, I feel B, who to hire, that should be up to them to determine. I think that's, that's their line of expertise as to who they get, but just my opinion. I think our only decision as a council, my personal opinion, is whether we're going to budget that amount for the police department or not. From there, they have enough expertise, especially the chief, to be able to make a determination as to who is safe enough, if you want to call it, to be able to do this type of a job.
Well, I guess if, my opinion is, if they're going to be called an investigative secretary, services secretary, I'm not in favor of it because of the possible security breach. If they want to hire somebody in a different category, I would support it, but not, not as an investigative secretary. Councilman Basie, how do you feel?
I think a police officer should be doing this here. I mean, we can budget for an extra police.
So are you in favor of the investigative services secretary? Yes or no?
No.
Councilman Conson, are you in favor of an investigative services secretary?
Yes, and have that officer out on the street doing police work.
Well, okay, so you're saying it needs to be an officer?
No, I'm saying to have the investigative services secretary trained, and somebody with background check, do the, answer the FOIA request, and then have the police officer out on the street doing police work.
Okay, Councilman Moskowitz?
I'm going to agree with Councilman Conson on that. If we're going to hire a policeman, let's get them out on the street and patrol in our neighborhood.
You're both talking, okay, because I think you both talking about something else. We're talking about investigative services secretary.
Yeah, I say.
Are we hiring the secretary?
I think we should leave the investigative services in for $20,000, and leave it at that.
But is that for a secretary or for a police officer? I'm confused now.
Well, it would be for a civil service job, as they said, and there would not be a police officer then, correct?
Correct. Maybe, how about this, how about we hire the person as a investigative services secretary, evaluate their progress over the half a year, and as we're preparing the budget for next year, if demand or you still have concerns over the security issues, then if we're able to bring our manpower up on the road, we could entertain putting an officer in there. The people that work in records, they're longtime employees of Dearborn Heights who have security, or clearances to obtain information from Lean, Clemis, and other sources.
But it will be a civil service job?
Correct.
Okay, I'll, I'll agree, as long as it's a civil service job.
So we got four for three, so then we'll just leave it? Okay, we'll leave it. Number 32, the fire department. Next we have 33, the fire department.
That all stays the same too.
Next we have 34. This is the building and engineering department. Next we have 35, which is already been.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
That one, the same thing with the capital outlay, $30,000, the breakdown, itemized breakdown for that.
But if they do any capital outlay, they still have to come before us anyway.
I understand, but we asked for it.
Yes, we did ask for.
That's why I'm following up, it's in my notes.
But we did have a change in, a building director. Oh, no, this is building and engineering, sorry.
This is to buy the program, building.net, O L Realtors.
I emailed it on Mason.
It's online permits contractor portal.
And then I also emailed it, and wanted you to confirm with me that you got it.
Yeah, I did get that.
Yes.
Yes.
It's a breakdown of what the capital outlay cost is for.
We will still need the approval of that.
Now, there's a lease pay for, it's line item 101-376-816.000, so lease pay for 13,000. I don't remember seeing that in the breakdown, what was that? It's 101-371-816.000. It says lease pay for 13,000.
So we projected that, and I presented to you that we wanted to take two part-time positions and make them two full-time inspector positions, and they would need vehicles to drive, so that's why I had to budget them on there. So it'll be three full-time inspectors.
So, okay, how many total vehicles do we have now? We have two?
Well, we have one used truck. We have some other ones, but they have recall issues, so I was, I got them marked and everything, but I was thinking ahead that we'd probably use them as trade-ins, there's some trade-in value, but we would need, you know, we would need to get new vehicles for the inspectors.
Okay, thank you.
We haven't had full-time inspectors.
Questions on that? Page number 35, that's pretty much taken care of. Page number 36 is ordinance. Page number 37, that's the pay for ordinance, that was already addressed. Page number 38 is the DPW Highway Department. Page number 39 is the DPW Highway budget, and that's, that's pretty much been covered.
They have increased the 5,000 from last year.
It's a three, that's a 3% one, 3%. Okay. On page number 40, that is Recreation Department. Page number 41, those salaries were already addressed with a 3% increase and a unit increase. Page number 42 is the Richard A. Young Center. And then page number 43 is already been addressed, as far as the wages goes. Page number 44 is Planning Commission. Page number 45 is the Cable TV Department.
While we're, I just want to, not question on this, can I, how are we coming along with the getting the cable TV station updated?
We were waiting for a meeting to, with the council, this table. Let's get it done, I want to get this done.
Okay, Council.
I think before we spent, like, we discussed in last year's budget, you know, when we asked, I mean, we keep going back and forth on this, we wanted more money to update the equipment, and it was said that there was no money, all of a sudden that money appeared. So I think before any monies, that kind of money's being spent, we need to audit to see where the money came from as well.
Okay, is that, which line item is that you're just talking about?
Which is 101-809-981-000.
That's for 450,000?
$450,000.
Okay. Yeah, that was true, there was none last year. Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
And I do agree with Councilman Basie about the audit, the forensic audit in particular. However, I'm going to add to that, however, the studio, the equipment, it's really outdated and problematic, and I think that we don't want to hold up one thing that's needed that interrupts communication and education services to our residents because of another thing. Like, the other thing, quite frankly, should have already been, the wheels turning, but there's something that's holding it up, right? But it still needs to get done. This legislative body voted on it, it approved it, it's what it is, it needs to get done. But let's, in my, again, my opinion respectfully, to not hold up that studio, because, well, quite frankly, they've got, they're buying cameras on eBay and stuff, and they're failing. And a lot of our residents, in particular seniors, rely on WDHT for information.
I don't mind, I'm sorry.
Okay, I think he's.
I mean, just the studio itself, but we do need to upgrade the equipment, buy new equipment, cameras, so I'm, I'm not opposing buying new cameras, just a big expense, like a studio, we need to make sure that the money didn't come out of another fund, so that's why I was asking about it.
My only issue is, if we're going to buy equipment, it should be able to be.
Compatible.
Compatible and fitted into the new studio, that we don't have to go out and purchase it again in another year because it doesn't work in the studio that we've designed. So I think we need to figure out what we're going to do as a studio on a whole goes, like a, like a business plan for that area, what is going to happen, what we need to buy, how much we're going to spend for certain things, what we got budgeted, when and where, and then see what we need, and start working on chipping away what we need.
Council Chair?
Councilman.
The question, the, the money issue is not if the money is there or not, it's the amount of money that's there. We, we know that the money is there, and to take the 450 away from this budget is going to slow us down on redoing that, that studio. And again, but I do agree with you that we might have to make sure that we buy the equipment that's going to be compatible as we go in the future, but to take it out of this right now, take it out of the budget would, I think, would hurt us. They still have to come before us to okay the spending, so I think we should just leave it there because this is desperately needed, in my opinion.
I concur.
Again, it's, it's not where the money come from, it's how much money is really there. That's the only que, and we know we have the money. We know we have the money. And that's only half of the money, I believe, that we're saying is in the budget.
Councilman Abella?
Well, I just want to say, I know the last time we had, in the early budget hearings on this, I know I spoke with former Chief Lee Gavin, and you mentioned that you'd already had some preliminary estimates from previous times, but you were going to get those updated and, and get a full-blown version, new version, as far as what the cost is going to be, is that correct?
We didn't do that since the study session, because after the study session, you know, we're under the impression that if you would give us whatever you would give us, we're going to spend and we'll develop. If you give us five, if you give us four, three, whatever, we'll develop from then, we'll go back to a contractor and see what we can do for that amount of money. But we would make sure, definitely, that the camera, work with Angela and Stan, that the camera and the equipment, you know, we could probably upgrade the city hall so we get a better service in here, and do what we can do with whatever you give us with that price.
Okay.
I think we should be left in.
I just ask, whatever we do, just make sure it's going to be compatible with the big picture, what we're going to end up with in the end, that we don't end up with equipment that we're going to say, oops, now it doesn't fit.
We'll get a consultant committee and see what they do.
That'd be perfect.
Council Chair?
Councilman Wenzel?
I just want to make it clear that there was an analogy made a few months back, that this cable station was like a car overheating, oil leaking, and ready to break down at any minute. And if council didn't approve this, it would be basically our fault that this happened. But I'd like to make another analogy, is this is like a council getting an automobile from someone that, who didn't take care of it, never changed the oil, never did proper maintenance on it. So we can't have, be held responsible for the condition of the studio in this current condition. We are all in favor of having top-of-the-line, best we could afford studio for the citizens of Dearborn Heights.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we also need to determine exactly where the location is going to be before we even plan it. Do we even know where we're going to locate it?
Madam Chair, there's also, that was, we were denied access to the location that we wanted to tour.
Yes.
So, and that happened back about three or four months ago.
And I think we should be able to go there and revisit that.
We should. Would you like to address that tonight?
Yeah, we asked to visit the Justice Center. You know, people told us different things, there is room for it, there's not, and some people told us there is no room for it. We wanted to see firsthand by ourselves, and it was, it was said that this would be in violation of a Closed Meeting Act, which I disagree with completely 100% because the council went out and toured a sewage treatment plant in the past.
And a golf course.
With no problem, a golf course.
But I think as long as you announce it publicly, ahead of time.
No.
No, we didn't announce the golf course.
That's not what.
And we didn't even announce going to.
No.
The wastewater treatment plant.
No, we didn't.
That's not.
You got the, you got it down pat, Lisa.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Opens Meeting Act, and I've been to so many trainings on this with Michigan Municipal League. You can go to an event, a fundraiser, Spirit Festival, a tour for this, to the library, whatever, with more than four, than a quorum, because you're not discussing, deliberating, debating, or deciding on an issue that we're going to be voting on. OMA clearly is, it's a violation if we were to get together somewhere and talk about voting on this budget and how we're going to vote, and we only did it amongst the four of us. That's when it's a violation. We need to be really clear about that, because that threat, or whatever that is with OMA, it needs to stop. We need to be educated, everyone, and I mean that respectfully, you know that. Education, knowledge is really important in this position.
There's nothing wrong with a tour and seeing what's available.
We should be able to, it's public voting, public tax dollars.
Tom, would you like to try and set that up again?
I don't, I guess I could go through the mayor's office and request tour of the Justice Center facilities that are vacant, currently vacant, and potentially suitable for, or not suitable for, a new studio.
Would that be possible, Mayor?
I don't have a problem with a tour, just properly follow the, whatever the Opens Meeting Act is.
Yeah, we're responsible for that ourselves. We're not going to, we're not going to do any of that.
You can tape it if you want.
I mean, you can tape us if you want.
I don't want to tape it.
So we have proof.
We'll tape our mouths.
We could do that too.
Chief?
Yeah, and that was kind of directed at me in a roundabout way, and that's all I said was just confirm it through the mayor's office, and I'd be gladly, if, you know, if there's an open meetings issue, it has to do with you, but it started off as one person coming in to look at something, and then it jumped to four or five, so that was the only issue.
Yeah, I think all of city council would like a tour of the Justice Center.
Come on over.
We'd love it. Council Wenzel, would you like to take care of that through the mayor's office, first?
I will, we will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess we're on to page number 46, which is the General Government Employee Pension. Next is 47, that is the pension, Act 345 Pension Expenses. I am assuming this is number 48 without a number.
Library.
That would be estimated revenues. I guess we're done. Oh, yeah, there's a library.
Very separate budget, but yes.
Okay.
Okay, that looks like it. Any further questions or concerns? We'll open it up to public comment right now.
Oh, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I did have one more question that we, we didn't get to, if I may, with Act 345, where, for the comptroller, or whoever this may be, we're asking to take, I believe, 1 million from Act 345 for the 115 trust fund, and a half, I'm sorry, 2 million? Okay. And that's for the 115 trust fund? All right, and you're taking money out of general fund of, is it five, or half a million?
300, I think, from general, I think it was 500 from water, and then 500, I think, 40,000.
This is for the 115 trust fund?
Yeah.
Why, my question is, why from the water fund? What does that have to do with health care for the retirees under police and fire?
It's not under, it's all retirees, we are obligated by the state to fund liability now. So a portion of it's coming out of Act 45 for the police and fires portion, and it goes into their area, and then the other portion is all for the other general. into their area, and then the other portion is all for the other general government employees. The state is making us pay, make sure that it's funded, and everybody has to pay. Yeah, and there's water department employees, library employees.
So you're putting all the retirees' healthcare obligations into the 115?
We have to.
Okay, that's my clarification question.
Okay.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
Why is water so much higher than everybody else's?
Um, you know, I don't, no, that was the estimate that was done by the budget by Plant Moran, and we didn't-
I need to, I need to-
Did you break down?
I need to see why water would be 500,000-
Got a breakdown?
And something else only 300,000. I mean, these people work, people that are working in water, I mean, if you, if you look at the hourly people in DPW, they're working water and they're working both. Why is water getting so much of the bill? I need to see a real good breakdown on that. Something, something looks fishy to me on that one.
Comptroller Vance, would you be willing to do a breakdown for us?
I'm sorry?
Would you be willing to do a breakdown?
I don't know if I have the capability, I believe the actuary was working on, was it?
It should come from Plant Moran.
Okay, you can run it.
It should come.
Okay, also, too, while I'm talking with you, can you tell us when we can expect the corrections to be made, and when you can get it online for the public to see before our next meeting, when we vote on it, so the public knows what we're going to be voting on?
I can work on the corrections, too.
That'd be perfect. I appreciate it.
The mayor's office is the one that puts it online, I don't put anything.
We need an answer.
So I can give it to them soon.
Good luck with that.
Mayor, would you be able to put it online after she gets it done?
Yes.
Mayor?
Pardon me?
Would you be able to put it online after she gets it done, so the public can see it right away?
We'll, we'll make every effort to, I don't know what Stephanie, if she has the time to do that. Is there any way to up, to load that easier, because she doesn't have to type all these numbers in, does she?
No, it's just a document.
Okay, if that's the case, we'll do it.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman Wenzel.
I have two things. Are we going to address the issue of our Recreation Deputy Director was, was approved for a $5,000 pay raise last year, and it was never given to that director, Deputy Director? Is that something that we can address, or is this something that's water under the bridge?
I don't know if tonight's day to bring it up.
Okay.
I wouldn't at this time.
Okay. And also, I would, a few months back, ordinance director McIntyre had an idea about some kind of new technology for the ordinance department, and everybody had tablets, I'd like, and we talked about having a study session, and I'd like to set up a study session, so we can determine either if we want this or not, if we can set something up relatively soon.
Prepared to do a study session, Director McIntyre?
You want a study session for the tablets that I want to order for the building inspector?
No, the, you came before us and you had a plan. You said you wanted to, you know, update everyone with this new system that you were talking about.
Yeah, that's actually in the budget that you just approved. It's tab, we're going to order tablets and also create a portal that, and that's hopefully what you just included, for the building department, where folks can go, streamline getting their permits or applications for inspections, have the ability to do that all online.
Oh, I didn't realize we were approving that. I wasn't aware of that. I, I heard pros and cons about this system, and the system we have now for getting occupancy permits, you know, that's one of the things you stated, is there a problem with people getting occupancy permits now?
No. We're going to make it, we're going to try to make it more efficient for folks. And we're talking about opening up on Fridays, but all the studies that I show in the cities that I look at, a lot of people want to do this type of, when they can, especially agents that assist with sales and purchases, they would prefer to do a lot of this stuff online. Most of the cities have moved over to this, so an average agent on behalf of their seller could go online, pull up the application, submit the application, and then through the portal, we could actually send a message back to them. We have to figure out the payment system, we're still, I've had some meetings, at least one meeting with John Riley about, and Linda Vance, about how we would do that. Other cities have pay systems that they make available to people to do that, but essentially you could do everything online, you could even get feedback on your inspection online. So our goal is, and I know it's been a goal of the mayors for several years, is to make these inspections available as soon as possible. That, for some people, especially if they're an investor that owns a property, or even an agent that's helping someone sell a property, they like to see that information right away so they get busy on any corrections that might need to be made. The way this will work is that as soon as the inspection is done, and the inspector comes back and synchronizes their tablet into the system, that information will immediately be uploaded into that portal, and that applicant that applied for will really get immediate feedback. Other cities have been doing it like this for years. Lamonia is one that I went and looked at, they're a little, probably, I don't think the average person would want to see that much information, and then there's some cities that just kind of do a thumbs up or a thumbs down. We're going to meet somewhere in the middle where we have, someone could go, and then we'll say, for example, you need to update the GFI plugs in kitchen and bathroom, and we'll kind of give them direction on how to do that.
So now a resident doesn't have to pay for this kind of information, correct? And in the future, they'll have to pay for it?
They got to pay for the permit, but what it will do is allow them access, and so if they're at home and they got a printer, they can print it.
Now, my-
City inspections, not CBO.
See, right now, don't you, when you do the inspection, you tear off a piece of paper and you leave them with part of it, to let them know immediately. So why are you taking it back and downloading it, so they have to make another step to go to it?
Well, in some cases, we're required to leave it at the property, the inspection. In some cases, it could be an owner of maybe a rental property, and people like that information to be available online. Because in those cases, what we do with those folks is, they might request that we mail them the inspection, so now it'll be available online for them immediately.
So you're still going to leave a paper copy with the person at the property after you inspect it?
We might, I'm going to be talking with Mark Roberts about that. If we could avoid that paper process entirely, I would rather do that. It would save us a lot of money in paper costs, and if it's available online, where people can go to it, then we would rather do that. If, if in the event that someone didn't have access to a phone, where they could really upload it on their phone, we could make, we could print a paper copy out back at the office if they requested that. But we're really trying to streamline this, and, you know, eventually, my goal would be, long-term, is a lot of the stuff that comes into a town where those things would be available, we don't have to store all this paper, we have a ton of them on a paper in our department.
No, like, the BSNA system, would they have to pay for it if they look it up?
You're talking about-
Because the BSNA, you know, the residents pay per lookup. Would this be free to any resident to look at any property they want that's been inspected for a CBO?
We'll have to come to you and talk about that, if we're going to make that available, and we would have to probably talk about a fee for that, because there is a cost associated with that on the BSNA side. So that would be something I could come to you at a study session if we wanted to make that available. But for the applicant that goes on there, they would have access to the information, the person that actually is seeking the information for the purpose of getting their permit finalized.
Well, the average person, if you, if I'm not, if I'm not the person paying for the permit, and I want some information about that, I'd have to pay, pay, pay a fee?
No, I mean, there's, you can go on the website now and look at some things that don't require a fee. We get a lot of calls often where people call and say, you know, my neighbor at blah-blah is doing, adding a room on the back of their house, and I looked in the system and I don't see a permit. You have access to some of that information.
What, what item was that on the budget?
It's capital outlay in the building and engineering.
Well, I'm just a little upset, because the last time I heard anything about it was we were going to have a study session on it, and now it's, it's put in the capital outlay. I mean, I, maybe I didn't look into the capital outlay good enough, but I was under the impression we were going to talk about it.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Council Chair. My question is for an update, it's an IT issue with ordinance department, so Director McIntyre. Back in 2017, 2018 budget, I recall, was the year, we talked about, we were doing the website update, I believe the company we contracted was Revive, and with that, part of it we added on, like, maybe two months later, was the app that people could download and report, like, ordinance violations, maybe even potholes that go to DPW, I don't know, but, you know, that's kind of, I say similar, it's not C Click Fix, but it's similar to C Click Fix that other communities have been using for years, but that was two years ago. And so can you please tell us, because the council approved that in their budget, allocated the money, did it all separate, can you tell us what's going on with that?
See, this is a budget hearing, I don't think-
Well, it's budget item, it's related, because it's a carryover from 1718 that was not fulfilled. Please, Madam Chair, thank you.
Director, would you like to answer that?
Go ahead. It wasn't in my budget line item for the ordinance department, but I know what you're referring to.
But we did approve it, correct? Because it was separate. You approved it. There are some issues with the compatibility with BSNA and C Click Fix, what you're calling C Click Fix. There, when we first, first had it, it was supposed to be able to, like, the old, the old website, we had something where somebody would put a citizen concern and complaint in, we would get it by email, we would then have to load it back in to BSNA, and it was, it was a problem. So this app was supposed to load it right up into BSNA, and they're having some compatibility issues. It's, it's still out there, it's being worked on.
All right, thank you.
If, if you're looking for, like, a launch date, it should be by September, I'm hoping sooner, but it's, it's-
Do you recall by contract, didn't they have a timeline to get it operational for us?
They do, but they can't, they don't run BSNA software, so, so we need-
It's an issue with BSNA?
Not the issue with BSNA, it's an issue with compatibility.
Yeah, they have to write programs for some of that. We're waiting, it's been two months now, waiting for a GIS program in the building department, and it's, I didn't, you know, I'm not a computer guy, but I've got a good friend at BSNA that, and when I say good friend, I mean-
He does everything for you.
I didn't know him beforehand. I've gotten to know him because since I started here, he has been remarkable in terms of helping us through a process that, you know, when I first came here, BSNA was not something I was familiar with, and I started asking questions with Brian at BSNA, and he kind of told me right up front, and he said, there's so much more capabilities with this system that, that you guys, you know, could really take advantage of. And so I started, like, looking at those things, and what this particular problem that we're having in building right now is become kind of a time-consuming thing for us, because normally we can, for instance, if someone's doing a project on, say, Warren Avenue, and we're required by ordinance to send communication out to a certain area around where that proposed, for example, the zoning changes that you guys have seen recently, where people have requested a zoning change. We have to send a communication out to a certain distance of people that are in that area. We, it's become kind of a manual process, because that program has to be written. They're working on it, I just got some feedback this week, but it literally has taken almost six weeks for them to write the program.
Yeah, two years is a long time, isn't it?
Well, I was just going to say, it's not two years, though, because when council approved it, it took, like, about, probably about six months to get the website finalized, and about another two months to get that up. And after we got the website up, you did inquire about it last year, and we said, we're working through the kinks, and we just started this, this app thing probably last fall.
We tested it, we tested it a few times, it needed some-
It's been a while.
Right, it has been, but it, it's, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further question? Okay, let's open it, public comment. Anybody from the audience, your name, address, in three minutes, please?
Good evening. Zohair Abdulhaq, Dearborn Heights. I want to talk about a couple items. I talked to the Assistant Director of the Legal Department in Dearborn, and he gave me an opinion about the PAC spending money, and he stated that we cannot use it for salaries, and I believe I sent it to your emails, I don't know if you received it or not, we sent it today. So that was clear, coming from two neighboring cities, from Radford and from Dearborn, and I don't know how many other cities I have to go to to prove that they cannot be used for PAC. And I hope you will take that into consideration when you approve the cable, that we should have a lot more money than 890,000. Second thing, I do agree with the chief of the police. I have been submitting FOIA's and they have been coming very late. The last one I submitted around 23 days, and I haven't even received a letter stating they need extra time. I do agree with him, he needs that, and I think the residents are entitled to get the information, which they are entitled to. And I encourage to have qualification, at least Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice for that person, so he or she will understand the law, understand what can be given or not given, especially there is sensitive information in the police department. And it should be civil service, not political appointee. And the last thing, I really thank you for what you're doing on this budget, and thank Mr. Bezzi for asking for more police officers, and everybody on this council, because I do agree with the chief again, there is lots of events, community events, and it is nice to have police officers there to show our face, so we have nice relations with our residents, and we have police presence, too. So I suggest, yes, to have more police officers appointed, and, you know, let's do it as fast as possible. And thank you again, and thank you for everybody who worked on the budget.
Thank you. Name, three minutes?
Hi, I'm Kim Constand, and I live at 5527 Heather Lane, and tonight I'm speaking as the Deputy Parks and Recreation Director. You guys were discussing tonight the 10% reinstatements. For your information, I did not receive my 10% back. In the 2018 budget, I did not get the 10 and 1/2% increase the other deputies got, even though this body voted it into the 2018 budget. I got 1% in 2018. In the 2019 budget, I'm put in for another 1%, just as the same as the other deputies. So that totals their increase in the last two years to 11 and 1/2%. That's 9 and 1/2% more than me. Again, I received 1% in 2018, will receive 1% in 2019, and have not received my 10% back, that I gave to the city when I worked really hard to assist to get the Headley override passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Interesting. For the comment?
Move to close.
Well, I have-
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I do, because I do have some, I know everyone wants to go home, I agree. But that's important, what was just shared. And my concern is, we've been talking and stressing about it being equal across the board, with the, give them the 10% back when you go to five days, do the 3% for everybody, and, and Ms. Constand is correct, because I now recall this, in 2018, there was an increase, she didn't get it exclusively. Why did she not? And I don't need that answer, by the way, but I don't need that answered, but what I hear you saying is the 9.5% is what's needed to bring you up to where the rest are right now. Is that correct, Ms. Constand?
Yes, but then that still doesn't- But then that still doesn't receive, to put me back in whole with the 10% that I gave back, because three of the deputies are brand-new, there was only one that was working during the 10% taken back. So, you know, I'm just pointing that out.
So in good conscience, should the council body act tonight? Because we've been amending, and this is a budget time, budget discussion, do something with this? Because I'm having a little bit of a hard time with that, because I, we keep saying, be fair, be fair, be consistent, but yet this person, from what we're saying, that's not happening.
Okay.
And I have a concern, I, it doesn't sit well with me.
What do you do, councilwoman?
I think the council body, I know, again, I respect your time, you want to go home, I understand, but I think the council body needs to make a discussion, decide, you know, you can't, you can't vote, you concur, like we've been doing, to do something with that situation.
Okay, what would you suggest, then?[1780.06]
I would suggest 9.5%.
Increase for Deputy Director Constant.
To bring her up, to, again, all fairness. That, and it's, it's open to discussion, of course, because I respect my colleagues.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abell.
So I'd like to give you the clarification, and this has nothing to do with you directly, Ms. Constant, but I thought we talked earlier for, and I just wanted to get a clarification. For people that took a 10% pay cut, we said we would only give it back if we went to five days, is that going to be the same case here, or?
Is that what stipulation is, if we go back to the five days, she will get 9 and 1/2 more?
Well, I think what Deputy Director's saying is that those deputy directors were already brought to that.
But no, what are you stating now with this? Clarify it for us.
I think whatever you apply, you do fairly. If she's short 9.5, she should have that. If you're extending to everybody else 10% upon five-day work week, that should be extended as well, because it needs to be fair.
That's what I wanted to hear, you're talking five-day work week, not the four days.
But I'd be at a potential 19%. It's fine, I'm sure we're clear.
Yes, because she's owed, well, I don't want to say she's owed that, but it feels that way, you know? Because I, in my personal opinion, from what I've seen, Deputy Director has done a great job in her position. I think, I mean, you're, I don't know, what, 23, 24 years?
32.
And to 32, so I was way up.
32.
I was making you so much younger then, God bless you.
Thank you.
But, you know, I think it's unfortunate that, what you just shared, and you're right, 2018, everyone else in the similar, you know, deputy position was brought up and you were not.
Yes, and you're talking about comparing me with the directors when you say, going back to a five-day week. The current deputies have been receiving their increases since 2018, July 1, and they were not given a stipulation of the five-day week. However, if you're comparing me with the deputies, you know, that, or the directors, that's something different. So you would have to choose, am I in the group with the directors or the deputies? You know, so.
I made a suggestion to the group, to the body, it's up to you all.
Well, what does everybody, what are your thoughts, Councilman Muscat?
I, I believe that, again, I'm going to say that everybody deserves a raise, but I'm contingent on working five days a week. I'm not going to back off of that. We made provisions of everybody getting 3% right now, and I believe we should just stick with that and leave it at that right now. This is what we, you know, we're opening up, we're reopening up everything again, and it's going to bring everybody up to the podium and say, well, what about me, what about me? We made the decision, I think we should stick by it. That's my personal opinion right at this present moment. This is not, I don't want to have any hard feelings with anybody, but that's what we as a body decided to do. I mean, we're, we're going to start making exceptions, I don't think it's a good thing, and it's not fair. And then we can look at that at another time.
Yeah, we can revisit, just do the, we're going with the 3%.
All right, so we're going to keep it as is right now, and we'll revisit this possibly in the future.
For the 3%.
Are you going to ask all your council members to concur where they stand? So you have two noes and one yes so far?
No.
Who's the no, Councils?
I thought Councilman Muscat and Councilman Bezzi said to leave it, so that's no for my recommendation.
Well, we're leaving at 3%.
Is to hold it at 3%?
I was talking about the 9.5 that she was denied in 2018.
The 3% we only give to the directors, not to the deputies.
That's true, too.
Yeah.
That was for directors and not deputies.
Unless I get too confusing here, I guess at this point.
Did the other deputy get their 10% back?
That's correct.
The other deputies were not employed at the time the 10% happened, is what I'm understanding.
Only, only one was employed, the other were ran.
Which one?
It doesn't matter.
I mean, I, for one, to, to make a decision on something like this, I'd want to see some sort of a breakdown from the administration as far as the past few years. I mean, and I trust, of course, she's saying nothing but the truth, but to make a decision, I'd need to see all the deputies, all these numbers, and then her numbers, and then it's easier for us to make a decision.
I agree with that.
Yes, I agree with that.
Let's do that, and let's not change anything at this point, we'll just keep it as is.
Then we can discuss what I brought up earlier about what was voted to give her last year and she never got.
Correct.
It needs to be discussed.
And I am open for fairness.
Well, we, we do need a breakdown on that.
Yeah, I'm open to fairness.
Breakdown is good.
I'm open to fairness, I just got to see the numbers.
Yeah, that's no problem.
I think that would be fair.
So, can we get a breakdown on that?
I can, I can give you salary histories for all the deputies, is that what you'd like?
Can you also give an explanation why she wasn't given the total amount that we approved in last budget?
That's not under my jurisdiction.
What jurisdiction is it?
That would be under the mayor.
Mayor, could you give us an opinion why that didn't occur?
I will not comment on it.
They were, all the deputies were made.
That was an increase in salary that council approved in the budget, and we asked you to do what we approved.
What happened to it?
Where did that money go if it didn't go to Deputy Director Constant?
I guess that's why we need a forensic audit.
Okay. Dr. McIntyre?
I've kind of lost my train of thought.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Just give me one second. Okay. The last thing I want to do is come up and tell you why I think I'm worth the salary that the mayor recommended for me. And I'm just speaking for myself now. And the reason I don't think I should have to do that is because there is nobody else that works in this corporation or municipality that has had to do that. When I started here, I agreed to come in at a supervisor's pay because it wasn't in the budget to have a director for ordinance, and we created that position in July. So I came in at a much lesser pay, and I also knew that when I accepted the pay of 54,000 a year, that that was based on what had occurred previous, that I was actually coming in at a reduced rate, because it wouldn't be fair, obviously, to hire me at a higher rate when other people had taken cuts. Now, I, the last thing I want to do is start splitting us apart, because I think, I think this has happened indirectly or directly. It's caused a lot of splitting, all this. But recently, a director was hired at a full salary, someone who didn't have the seniority with the city. So it feels very arbitrary to me how this is being conducted, so I'm not asking you to do that, but I want to make it perfectly clear that one of the first things I, the first things I was told when I was hired as a director is that I would be expected to work on Fridays. And immediately, I started doing that. My job also included working Saturdays, and then I found soon, much later, that my job required being on call 24 hours a day. I've taken sporadic vacations, and when I've done that, I've taken them, and with the assistance of some folks in the back row there, who have covered me with phone calls why I'm traveling through the mountain or why I'm on an airplane. But as soon as I land, I text them, I tell them I'm available by phone again, and I've done that for five years. So I'm not going to come up here and ask for, or try to tell you that I think I deserve a fair pay for what I'm doing. I think most of you know in your hearts that I, I've given more, and I think most of you know in your hearts that I'm not the only one that's done that. One of the first things I did was I found out through the union that I could be open five days a week. So it wasn't well-received by the staff in my department, I had to have many meetings about it, but I said, this is something that the contract provides for, that we can be open actually six days a week in the ordinance department. The door may not be open, but our phones are open, we answer calls on Friday, and I have ordinance officers that are out working on Fridays, including animal control. So we do operate five days a week. And again, for the record, I am on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I don't have a designated deputy, I don't have a designated day off, I'm employed every single day.